Welcome out to the Planning Commission, July 26 to 22. I'm Commissioner Cox. Call to order.
Chairman Cox?
Here.
Commissioner Hayman?
Here.
Commissioner Mondragon?
Here.
Commissioner Richter?
Here.
For present, we have a quorum.
Okay, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, be seated. Do I have anybody that would like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
All motion to approve.
Second?
All second.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayman?
Aye.
Commissioner Mondragon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richter?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting?
Motion to approve.
All second.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayman?
Aye.
Commissioner Mondragon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richter?
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
This is the portion of our public comments on items that are not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the commission on matters that are within the commission's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant the Brown Act, the Planning Commission may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Do I have anybody in the public that would like to talk about something that's not on Seeing none, I'm going to move on. We're going to move into the public hearing portion of our meeting. I will open it at 6:13. Site plan review, 22-01 EV charge park and coffee shop, an application for development of vacant parcel to construct electric vehicle charging stations, covered parking and coffee shop, building located on the southeast corner of China Lake Boulevard and French Avenue, zoned general commercial, APM 396-060-14. Staff report.
It's, there seems to be an issue. They can't hear us online. So, it looks like we're having a little bit of technical difficulties.
Okay, so we'll hold for just a few minutes and see if this can be ironed out.
All right, so this item is, before you tonight, is an electric vehicle charge park and a coffee shop. It's located at the southeast corner of the intersection of China Lake Boulevard and French Avenue. This property is zoned general commercial and the general plan designation is commercial downtown. The property is approximately three quarters of an acre, and this was previously an Indian Wells Valley water district well site. This is the proposed site plan. The applicant is proposing to develop 20 Level 3 and Level 2 EV charging stations with solar carports and a drive-through coffee shop. The drive-through coffee shop is 750 square feet, and there are exterior restrooms that total 315 square feet. The project also includes outdoor seating areas, and the applicant expects to have about four employees on each shift, or the maximum. This slide shows some views of the current project site. The applicant has also provided us with several concept drawings that were not included in the agenda packet, so I'm going to go through the O's with you. So this is an aerial view of the project site. You can see the black is the solar-covered carports. The whole thing has a block wall. This shows some of the parking lot lighting. The parking lot lighting that is by the carports is mounted on the carports itself, and then there's the general regular parking lot lighting on the rest of the parking lot. The landscaping is low water, hardscape materials, and then there's additional trees that provide some shading on the site. The parking stalls are to the city's design standards with a nine-by-twenty and then a one-foot double striping. The proposed parking, obviously since the use is for EV charging park, it does exceed that requirement for the 750-square-foot parking or coffee shop. That's just another view, show what the carports with the solar covering would look The site is surrounded with a six-foot block wall, and then there is a four-foot pedestrian walkway that goes along the southern border of the property. The trash enclosures, the block wall, and all the exterior materials would be matching in color and scheme, so there is consistent design. So, the site plan was circulated to Caltrans for comments. The comments were incorporated in the plans that are before you today. I will let Travis, our Public Works Director, discuss more of the engineering conditions in just a moment when I get through with the planning. So, the project does qualify for a CEQA exemption for the infill development, and then staff would make the recommendation that the resolution 22 approving Site Plan Review 22-01 and making the finding that it is categorically exempt be approved by planning condition, or planning. On the line, you have the applicant and the property owner, so if there are questions, if they can hear us at this point, then you guys can also talk to them. But I'm going to let Travis take over and discuss some of the ingress and egress.
All right, so, as we all know, this site is a very unique layout and configuration. I don't necessarily know if there would be any other better intended use for this site. With that in mind, we do have some other businesses. We have high-volume traffic on State Route 178, especially during peak times of going to boroughs. With our condition of allowing access off China Lake Boulevard and French Avenue, staff felt that there could become a potential traffic issue there, and we wanted to mitigate that, so we did require a traffic study that takes into account signal timing of all the turning movements on French, U-turn movements, traffic loading and volumes, and how they would be affected with McDonald's and all the other businesses in the area. Peak time impacts from both the coffee shop and McDonald's, as we would assume that they would probably have the same peak times, both when you're going to school and when you're coming from school. The width of the driveways, the location of the driveways, the amount of queuing that's available on-site, and then if turn pockets or turn sizing is necessary. After speaking with the applicant numerous times, where staff is kind of relying on what the traffic study says to better determine if the placement of the entrances are suitable to the flow of traffic or if they are not. Some of the other things to note are, most of the sidewalk is not ADA compliant. One of the conditions of this is to make the sidewalks ADA compliant. They'll have to put in a sanitary sewer line that feeds onto China Lake Boulevard, as we don't have any sewer available in French Avenue. And some of the other drainage impacts are, there's a drainage channel that runs from the northwest corner of the site, through the site, and exits in the northeast corner. There's two curb inlets that are located on China Lake Boulevard and French Avenue. Those will have to be updated, and just based on the site plan will have to be piped, and an easement would have to be dedicated to the city for maintenance purposes. And with that, like I said, we talked to Caltrans with the single entrance, with an entrance off China Lake Boulevard being one way, not having an exit there to cause more impediment to traffic, but ultimately, I think what it's going to come down to, the placement of the driveways, is going to be what that traffic study says. And that's all the kind of specifics. We are not requiring onsite detention because there is a designated wash there that staff feels has, will have capable capacity to handle their peak stormwater runoff. You'll have drainage inlets that are going back in or being reconstructed, depending on the flows, that can accept that water, and then so long as it's mitigated and slowed down before it's discharged into the existing channel past the site, we don't see that there being a negative impact to any of the surrounding properties.
Do you want to share any information with the commission about our conversation the other day?
So, we did have a conversation with the applicant of, about what the structure is that is next to the east-west, true east-west running solar panels in the planner area on the south property line. That is the infrastructure for the EV charge park, to which the applicant informed us that they are going to be putting some sort of screening to minimize the impact for visual and make it match the surroundings, make it match the buildings. Staff also noted that there's no parking for the staff that works in the coffee shop, but we feel that there can be minor modifications to the site plan at the northeast portion of the property right now, just past the trash enclosure, that would allow for staff parking. And other than that, I'm open to any questions or comments, concerns.
So, I have just one question. On the lighting that they showed, I assumed that it's LED, but is it powered or is it solar?
I do not know the answer to that question.
The reason I ask, in seeing the artist's conception here that I have, I would like to make sure that it's not similar to what Dr. Iresha Gunasina did, and it ended up not having parking lot lighting. So as long as it has a power backup, even if they're using their solar and their shade, and what kind of power that they have, so that we're lighting up this area for people. Let's find that out, please. Commissioners, do you have questions?
I believe the owner heard your question, if he was willing to answer it.
Yes, we did. So, everything will be run with regular electric service. The solar is to feed back and push back on the consumering of the PV charging, of the EV chargers.
Okay.
But everything will be connected 100%. The solar will just be an extra access of utility during the day, and anything to feed back, just to not include some serious charges on that charging station.
Do you know what the power is of the lights, the lumens, or?
They're going to be LED, they're going to be very low wattage. We've installed quite a few here in Bakersfield at GMC parking lots. They are very low wattage. I can provide specifications on that as well. And even if you feel, we can also provide a site plan photometric to give you the adequate lighting with minimal wattage available out there.
Okay.
They're pretty sleek and very state-of-the-art these days, that it takes minimal power to light these bad boys with high efficiencies.
So, commissioners, there, we're definitely waiting on a traffic study to make any decisions as far as the site plan. The purpose of what you would want to do tonight from the staff report and with the applicant and architect on the phone with us, is if you have questions or concerns, is to ask either staff or them to see if you can get some clarification. We have talked with the architect and shared some concerns, but it's pending the traffic study. And, and so, you know, rather than bring those out, we probably ought to wait for that traffic study, but if you have concerns or questions, you should ask them here. So, we can start.
Hey, Warren?
Yes?
Warren, it's Bill. I was able to dial in. I have some concerns you and I have sort of discussed, and we're, I'm content on waiting for that traffic study in order to make sure that any sort of concerns that I have are eased. But other than that, I appreciate the project. I think it's, it's a good thing for Ridgecrest. The fact that it's an infill project is amazing, and so I'd love to see this proceed. I do just, I would be much more comfortable seeing that traffic study first.
Yes, and I agree. I think this would be a great addition to us. So, let's start down at the end here, and Megan?
Yeah, I have just a few questions. The city plans to do infrastructure replacement, and you offered that the city can install the Y at the developer's expense. Has that kind of agreement been done before?
So, what it would be is, we'll have line items and bid items, and we're actually in the process of replacing, good lord, the sewer main line. We've got 90% plans for our Phase 2 sewer project, which is going to replace China Lake Boulevard from Argus Street, south, all the way to California, and then down California, pretty much to La Mill. It just seems like it would be more prudent to get a refund agreement or put it in their developer's agreement, to have our crew, while we're already out there, install the Y, so that way they're not cutting into the pipe and we're having two points of failure put in our brand-new pipe that we're putting in. So, that's something that can be negotiated, that can be dealt with, with, based on timing, when we see when their project's going versus when our project is going. And like I said, they might not know exactly where they want their outlet to be, so it might be something that we can't do. But it was just, it was just a thought, and I wanted to try to protect our new, our investment as much as we could. So I felt that installing at the time of installation of the pipe, if they know where it's going to go, and being refunded, the cost of the Y would be in the best interest of everybody.
Do you have a planned date for when the city starts to do that sewer overhaul?
So, that sewer overhaul, obviously we're in 90% plans. We have to review the 90% plans. We made some substantial changes from the 60%, so I'm going to say that we'll probably be ready to go to bid sometime in October. And then they'll have, we'll obviously try to best place a lateral, but have something that can be a little bit more flexible with where the location is, as they develop their grading plans and utility plans and things like that. And we would just continue to work with the applicant to make sure that we could try to meet his needs, and if not, we would just have to cross that bridge when we come to. There are numerous couplings that you can use that are pretty sound, but it's just if we could fit one in on a piece of pipe and not add another coupling, I would prefer that.
And then my follow-up is, how long does a traffic study typically take?
Depending on the available, the availability of the engineer, it can be anywhere from two weeks to four weeks, is what we've been seeing.
And that includes getting the data and then sending out the report?
Yes, usually depending on the availability. It's two weeks for dead collection, and then two weeks roughly, I would say, for them to prepare the report.
So, we should have it back next month?
Like I said, depending on the availability of the engineering firm.
I'm not pushing on you at all.
I, you know, honestly, I think you guys know my rapport. I would be open if the commission would wish to give me the jurisdiction to approve the site plan after we've seen the traffic study and consultation with you guys individually, if you guys would be willing to push that to me. But like I said, I don't want to take anything from the Planning Commission for approval or denial of an application. I just know that with all the new EV charging, that there's usually grant funding involved with these, and grant funds usually have crucial time periods. So, I don't know if his site plan and the grant funding is contingent on an approved site plan from the Planning Commission or not, and I would hate to see us stymie a project like this for a need that I think is really the most ideal for this property, and have us not be able to do it because we missed our grant funding opportunity.
Exactly. Okay.
So then, does Jose have, has he communicated that he has grants he's waiting on? Do we have like a deadline or timeline of those as well?
I do not know the deadline or the timeline, but I do believe that they do have grant funding on the line for this.
Okay.
Is that true, Jose?
We are talking with SCE right now, going back and forth. They will be providing some funding, but I feel like Robbie may be able to explain that a little bit more. Robbie is online. If you want to chime in, Robbie, you're more than welcome to. But SCE is coming back and forth with us. They have given us the approval that their service there is adequate enough. So, and they are grants for the Level 3 chargers, or it may be the Level 2, one way or the other. Robbie, feel free to chime in.
You're on your own.
Hi guys, this is Robbie. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yeah. I appreciate you guys taking this project on, looking at it, and hopefully can get this thing approved. But we, there's two grants that we have, the SCE Charge Ready Program, and the other one is through the Cal EVIP that I applied for as well, for the project. And so, usually the funding, you know, is all good within 18 months from start to finish, and I've already started the funding, or application I've been approved for it. So, there is a time crunch, but I, you know, a couple of weeks or a month wouldn't hurt, for sure. We're in the design phase and getting all the engineering done, and so there is a little bit of time.
So, like, how much time is left?
Turn, turn the mic.
About 17 months I have left.
Non-directional.
I haven't turned key.
Because sometimes out there, they can't hear us.
Okay, thank you.
Did you, did you hear his response?
Yeah, 17 months. 17 months.
To be turnkey, so?
Yes.
I would assume that that means constructed and literally ready to charge a vehicle?
Operational, yes.
Okay.
And, and I do know, just so you know, we have been in the process with one of our projects for the bus shelter, to procure a Level 2 chargers for our transit buses, and right now it's over eight months to get them.
That was my big question, thank you.
Commissioner Richter, any other questions? Okay, Commissioner Mondragon?
Yeah, I think it's a great project. I think it would be like the first of its kind in Ridgecrest, right?
It would be, and actually, at this point, there is no charging stations in Ridgecrest at all. I actually had a gentleman come in today to comment on this project, because he received the notice, and he needed to charge his vehicle, and at which point he only had 24 miles left before he needed to charge, and there was nowhere to charge in Ridgecrest. He was in favor of the project, obviously, so.
So, one of the questions I have for Travis is, depending on what the traffic study says, or the outcome of that, would they be able to recommend, because I see a huge traffic jam on French, going westbound, with the high schoolers wanting to turn into that driveway. Would the traffic study make suggestions on how that could be fixed or changed?
Yes, so since we have them analyzing all turning movements, they would make recommendations for any improvements to either inhibit or allow turning movements. That's kind of why it's a broad scope. So whether that means a pinned-on curb on French to block the driveway off to westbound traffic, which would force them to make a left, make a U-turn, and come in off China Lake Boulevard, I, like I said, I mean, we're talking all speculation here, but that's, that is all things that we're wanting to have analyzed, so that way we don't create a major impact to this. And that was, honestly, was Caltrans' biggest thing, is they already know that it's troublesome in the morning with McDonald's people trying to turn out, and people trying to make right turns, and they didn't want to see a further impact in the area.
Okay. Any other questions?
Would, would the improvements for the, you know, the streets, would that go to the developer?
That would be part of, if we decided to take on, that's why we got the traffic study. If we decided to honor or utilize any of the traffic study, we would add what conditions we would need for the, from the traffic study to be met to allow the project to proceed.
Okay. So if the commission tonight approved this and gave you the authority to approve it once the traffic study was completed, that would move the project along faster?
I would say, I would say yes, because then they would say that they have substantial approval of the project pending this traffic study and how to handle ingress egress.
Okay.
And like I said, I'm not going to be somebody to make a unanimous decision. I think you guys have all known me long enough. I know it's only been a short year and a half here, feels like 10, but.
What's your name?
Yeah, but I would definitely circulate the traffic study, get all your guys' comments, have responses to you guys, and verify that everybody's in support before we made any final decisions.
And just to be clear, the developer is okay with the traffic study?
To my knowledge, they have not pushed back from the traffic study at all.
Okay.
That's it? That's it? Commissioner Hayman?
Mine would just be to see the outcome of the traffic study, but other than that, I think it's a great project.
Thank you. So I agree, I think it's a great project, and I, we've sat down with the architect, and we talked about some possibilities, and, and I don't really think that we need to go into them, because we don't know what that traffic study will say. But they're aware of concerns that we have, and so I think that we'll leave it there. So, I, I don't know at this point if, I think, Commissioner Ferris, do you have a problem authorizing Public Works to handle this, but once they get the traffic study, visiting with each one of us individually and looking at the concerns so that we can move this along?
I am all, all for that. I do think that we should have everybody sort of see the, see the traffic survey in order to kick it up a little more, but just so we don't lose any time, I think that's probably the most efficient way to do that.
Well, you want to do that, or do you want to have a special meeting?
I am not a huge fan of, of special meetings, but especially if it can be done, just meeting with Travis, but if, if you feel that's more efficient, then I'm, I'm in support.
Well, a meeting, a meeting is the only place that all of us can talk together. So Public Works can get our input from the traffic study and culminate it together and make a decision, and I'm okay personally with him making that decision. I just want to make sure you are too, after he can, after he talks to us.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. And like I said, if, if you think it requires a special meeting, but again, we're not, we're not saving that much time if, if that, if we decide to do a special.
Okay, Commissioner Richter? You're okay with Travis?
Yes.
Public Works taking the head or the helm with this, but they'll, they'll talk to each one of us, and once the traffic study comes in and gets, get our input.
Sounds good.
Okay. Bernie?
Absolutely.
Nessa?
Yes.
Okay, so, we would approve it upon that condition, correct?
So, I guess, this would...
Or do we continue it, pending the, the, just continue it?
This wouldn't be any different than how our past engineer would have handled anything. His condition would have generally read that improvements be consistent with what the traffic study determined. And those open-ended conditions are nothing new to our resolutions.
So, we approve the resolution pending the traffic study and allowing Public Works to make the final determination?
Correct. That's generally what they typically have said in the past. That was for...
So then I would move that we approve resol...
Can I?
Yes.
Real quick, sorry. I do have two corrections to that resolution. The first one is, you're here, Mr. Chairman, so I'm going to remove Bernie as the acting chair from that.
Okay.
And the second is, in the third whereas, the address is incorrect, so... And the second is, in the third whereas, the address is incorrect. So, that address is going to be 154 North China Lake Boulevard.
Okay.
So, that will be the address for the site. So, that address, and then it will say your name, Mr. Chairman. And then that was my only corrections.
And then you'll add these, these, these two conditions, right?
So, then...
On the traffic study. Well, I know that he's already ordered the traffic study, and it's in here, but that the determination will be made by Public Works after discussion with Planning Commissioners.
So, then we're going to go...
Can I, can I jump in real quick?
Yes, absolutely.
So, I deliberately did not write that we would honor everything in the traffic study, because I didn't know when I, if that I was given the designation to approve the site plan, if the commissioners would want to honor everything in the study.
No, no. You noticed that my wording was pending the traffic study, not that we will adhere to everything in the traffic study.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that everybody had that designation, that we don't have to follow everything in the traffic study. It's just more of a, think of it as a guideline, an unfunded mandate, as the state likes to say.
So, that's, that's why I worded it the way I did for her. So, as she adds that into the resolution.
Okay. So, we're going to put that under the street improvements. You have the circulation, number one. So, we're going to add a number two. And how would you like that to, so?
So, you're going to have to go all the...
No, it's just going to be, it's not number two. It's double I. So, it's, you've got one, and then A, and I.
I, double I.
This is the traffic study, and what, everything that's in the traffic study. And then the two would be...
Then you're going to do a double I.
Right.
Double I, okay.
And that's going to say...
Before we get to A.
Let's clarify what that condition is going to read.
Okay. The condition is going to be that the Planning Commission is going to authorize Public Works to determine from that traffic study, the requirements needed for public safety.
Yep.
I don't think we need to put in that you're going to talk to the Planning Commission, right?
No, I think that's very evident, that I will talk to everybody and get opinions before we make a decision.
Okay. So...
All right. Got it.
Okay. So, I would move that we approve Resolution 2201, pending the traffic study and the conditions to be met by Public Works. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Chairman Cox?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Ferris?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayman?
Aye.
Commissioner Mondragon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richter?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay. At this time, we thank both of you for coming to our meeting tonight, and I hope this will help this project along. We're excited to see it. You're welcome to stay at our meeting if you would like. I'm going to close this public hearing at 6:44.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. Thank you so much.
Well, I guess I better open up the public hearing again at 6:44, and ask if there are any public comments. Thank you. Way to go, Bernie. I thought you were in charge.
I was going to say, maybe I should have.
Okay, no call-ins?
None, ma'am.
Okay. Nobody in the gallery that wants to jump up and challenge us?
Any peanuts?
All right. Then I'm going to close this public hearing at 6:45.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good evening, guys.
All right. Let's move on. Commissioner comments, committee reports. Start down at the end. Commissioner Richter?
I have my first quality-of-life meeting next week, so nothing to report.
Any particular comments?
No.
No, you don't want food or drink or?
I'm a well-fed adult. Thank you. Oh, never mind.
Okay. Bernie?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Vanessa?
For quality of life, we just went over grants and just updates. And then for the city org, we just went over signage that they want to put up.
Okay.
That was it.
Any particular decisions that were made? Okay. Staff items?
So, there's a one-day Planning Commissioner training, but it's only one day, so I don't know if anybody wants to travel.
Is it online?
No. But it is in Mammoth, so there's that. So, and then there is also the California Planning Conference in October, which staff will be attending this year. That will be in Anaheim. It's the first weekend in October. Last time, I did mention to you guys about the planning projects on the website. And so, I wanted to let you guys know that we did add this project on for this month. And then we were able to share those concept drawings and the site plan on there, too. So, at this point, we are getting, we have 300 views on there. So, that is nice that we're able to get more information out to more of the public. But I'll send you guys this information about the one-day training to see if anybody's available and if you want to go. Other than that, we have a couple of projects that may be coming before you soon, some exciting new stuff. So, I will let you all know as soon as they officially apply.
Good. Okay. If there are not any other questions, ideas, okay, then we'll adjourn at 6:48.
Thank you, Warren.
Thank you, Bill.